All right. Good evening all. Welcome to the... What's today's date? The January 28th, regular meeting of the Town of Easton Planning and Zoning Board. As always, we're going out either live or recorded, and/or recorded via ECAT. And if there's anybody here to Lincoln Estates 2, we've received a request to continue, and also the same for 924 Washington Street. So if anybody's here for those, you may want to come to our next meeting. So why don't we take two motions, just to continue those, and get that out of the way?
I'll make a motion to continue Lincoln Estates 2 to the next running board meeting. Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? unanimous. Thank you.
And Mr. Chair, just a piece of housekeeping. I do have to attend the Board of Selectments meeting on another item.
Okay.
We may or may not be done before I get called down.
Okay. No problem. And 924 Washington? Someone want to do the same?
Make a motion to continue 924 Washington Street until our next meeting.
Our next meeting is the 11th, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Thank you. All right. First up, we have an A&R plan for 216 222 Bay Road.
And we have a public notice here.
Oh, no, this is A&R.
Yeah, sorry.
All right, Mr. Chair, my name is Scott Thayer from Home Green Engineering. Representative Keith McLaughlin. What we have for you is an A&R plan. Mr. McLaughlin owns four lots on Bay Road, four existing lots. What we're looking to do is to reconfigure two of the lots, as shown on the plan that we submitted. I unfortunately don't have a plan in front of me to...
Well, we got...
All right, perfect. So we're looking to reconfigure plots 312 and 313, again, the existing lots that front on Bay Road. And we're not looking to touch the frontage at all. We're just looking to kind of reconfigure the back half of 312 and 313. And also, as part of that, to reconfigure what I'm calling Lot A, which is House Number 16 on Pheasant Lane, to bring that up to 40,000 square feet. Right now, it's an existing 30,000 square foot lot. So we'd like to add a little bit of area to that, to get that to 40,000. And the master plan, the end game, is to come in to you folks shortly with a common driveway that would come in off Pheasant Lane to get to the large buildable portion of the new lots B and C. So you can see where the existing lot line between 312 and 313 goes all the way to the back of the property. So we're just looking to kind of cut that off and give most of that back dry land to my new Lot C.
Okay. But I just, for the record, want to state, we are tonight just looking at this as an A&R plan, and it's by no means... Does this mean...
An opinion at all.
Anything to do with any future development, right?
Exactly. Just trying to give you an idea as to what we're looking at and why we're doing, why we're proposing, what we have before you folks tonight.
We appreciate the candor. Stephanie?
Okay, so the lots as shown have lots B and C have their frontage along Bay Road. However, due to the extensive wetland system, it's not feasible that you would have access into the lots from Bay Road. So technically, there's no access to the lots. And it, under the definition of case law, it would appear that the frontage along Bay Road is illusory, and that there is no access into the lots. And in order for the board to be able to endorse these as compliant lots, they would have to have frontage. So, you know, my... You know, the question that I believe the board needs to consider is whether the extended topographical conditions at the site, which in this case would be the extensive wetland systems, you know, actually negate the definition of frontage.
But where we're only looking at... So are you saying, but, so, you know, an A&R plan doesn't necessarily... endorsing an A&R plan doesn't mean it's a buildable lot, correct?
If the, if the board believes it's, they're not buildable lots, then they should probably request that the plan denote that.
So... Can I jump in?
Oh, go ahead, yeah.
So, I read your comments, and I was looking under our definitions of lot frontage, and I didn't see anything that, in my mind, disallowed the use of the frontage. And I do know of a couple properties in town that have that situation currently.
Right.
So I wasn't sure what we were citing to say that the wetlands would preclude them from using that as frontage. And that's, I was confused by that. I was trying to find where it said that, and I couldn't find...
It doesn't state it in the bylaw. It's actually the Chapter 41, which is the substitution from the law. And I just want to speak to, yes, there have been other lots in town that had claimed frontage along a road, but then access along another, a back portion where it also abutted another road. The lots didn't have 150...
One is practically neighboring to me.
Yes. Then the lots didn't have 150 feet of frontage, but they had access from a road. In this instance, so again, Mass. General Law requires frontage along a way that provides adequate access to the site. And the way the law is written, the presumption is that the roadway is sufficiently developed with proper grading and access that you can get, you know, that it passes in front of and you can get to the lot. The question is getting into the lot. And there is some case law that's provided in the A&R handbook.
So there's commentary in the handbook that states that this is the way it should be, right?
That, that if the board determined that, that these lots didn't have adequate frontage, there would be case law backing up the decision such.
If I could, Mr. Chair, there... Stephanie's correct. I've got the A&R handbook in front of me, and I spent some time going through it today. And it's, it's very confusing going through the handbook, because there is a lot of case law that, that does speak to that. But there's also case law that says that, this one in particular, says the existence of interior wetlands, blah, 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 does not broaden the scope of the board's powers. Basically, where you have to look at the wetlands. So it is entitled to an A&R endorsement. There's a bunch of case law that goes in both directions, you know, regarding wetlands, regarding guardrails, topographic conditions, ledge, all kinds of instances back and forth. I don't think it's a, I don't think it's really a cleared, cut, and dried case where it's either a yes or a no, to be honest. Again...
Yeah, right. It's always, it's always fraught with stress when you have case law on both sides.
You're right. Land court itself, it kind of contradicts itself back and forth in both cases.
Right. One thing that, but what I think helps us in this case is that if we were to grant this, this still doesn't give you by right, the right to do anything.
Right, right.
However, however you propose to do this, common driveway, state lots, whatever, they're all special permits.
Still needs special permit approval, still needs conservation approval.
So I'm just curious. So what's this, what is the, is the house on Lot A coming down?
Um, I'm not 100% sure if it is.
I'd like to speak a little bit, very carefully. So there's four lots that my father bought from Doug King 25 years ago, okay? We've been paying taxes on the four lots, assuming they were buildable lots, right? Which is not the case. Recently, my father, two years ago, said to me, hey, why don't you take these over, you know, develop them into a couple of house lots for your kids' college fund, whatever. And I realized there were, there's a lot of wetlands there. We didn't know, I didn't know, I didn't pay attention. We've been paying taxes, assuming they're buildable. It is what it is, right? So we hired Scott, his firm. We realized that, okay, we have upland in a certain area. We bought a house off Pheasant Lane. Let's, let's get access to upland. Let's follow the bylaws, build two houses in the back with the idea of a common driveway, and then we'll rebuild. This house is a disgusting house in Pheasant Lane. We're going to tear that down and build something that's nice. That, that's the intent. Access according to the bylaws, something that's upland, accessible, you know, in a nice neighborhood. And, and, and then we were going to, like, try to donate the other two lots to the town. Quite honestly, it's all wet.
Sure.
We should use the microphone up for the public speakers, I think.
Okay, yeah, hopefully.
So it's as innocent as what I just spoke.
Oh, yeah. No, there's no, no. Land use isn't looked as evil in this room.
Four two-acre lots that, you know, we realize over time that, you know, a lot of it's wet.
Yeah. No, I think my, my concern would be, you know, like I said, the A&R, I'm like, okay, well, that doesn't, because this, I'm, I think we could go back and see there's times that we've, we've probably allowed A&R that maybe didn't say not a buildable lot. And that doesn't, that's really more for clarity, right? I don't think that has a legal... It doesn't, it's not in perpetuity, right? You know, I mean, if, let's say this...
It doesn't mean that...
If this, right. Let's say 20 years ago, the Eastern Planning Board said not a buildable lot on this.
Right.
That doesn't keep us from hearing, you know, a common driveway, state law, whatever.
Making it billable at some point.
Right. And that's, that's why we have the special permit process. So it's a public hearing. So we hear what the abutters say. Because my concern, if this was to be developed really, is more how it's laid out, how it affects. You know, because that is a nice neighborhood. And, you know, we've all seen it. Plenty of times people go in and just dump a house behind another house with no thought. And that's, that's, you know, so anyway, so that's why, you know, I think, but I, without having the bylaw etched in my brain, that's why I'm more curious going, okay, can you make that work with a common driveway with how it lays out? But that's, that's a question for another night.
Yeah, I mean, I'd be okay with approving them as unbuildable lots, but if you wanted to, you know, play it safe, we could, you know, wait to see if town council advises against it for some reason.
Well, I was hoping for, I thought I was coming here to get, because we're developers in general, you know, proper screen, you know, tree lines.
Sure, sure.
That's what I was expecting, and I, we're all for that.
Yeah. But I mean, that's not what, tonight's just about property lines.
I wasn't sure.
Excuse me. Yeah, no, all, all of that would be, you know...
Down the road.
When you come in for, for a special permit. And that's...
Yeah, even the A&R handbook, I think it's updated as of, what, in 2010? So I mean, there's a lot of...
Right.
Things have actually changed since then as well. So we could either make our own decision, or we could, you know, get some...
So, right. So let, so let me ask you a question, Stephanie. I mean, so...
Yeah, go for it. Go ahead.
So your recommend, your recommendation was to at least consider putting not a buildable lot on, right? So my, or if that's the case, now, I know that, that, again, that doesn't preclude us from doing, from approving anything in the future. And is it your thought to, for consistency, because we've always done that in the past?
Um...
Because these aren't buildable lots right now, because they have no frontage. Oh, no, that's, no, that's not true. That's not true. Right, right. So see, I, I'd have a problem with that, because, because you, I mean, I, you know, I've tried to change this bylaw, but we haven't been able to get there.
I think that's, it's the question for the board, is where these don't have a lot line that abuts another developed way.
Right.
On the surface, you look at and go, well, what are your options for actually getting to the sites and getting into them, the development?
Right.
It, it's, you know, it's an interesting conundrum, because you do have this area that appears to be, and I, you know, I want to also, in my report, I state that that wetland line has not been confirmed by conservation provisions. So, you know, it could be...
It could be less.
Is, is there a situation where these were approved as lots, and then the conservation would have to be allowed to permit them access because they have a lot, they have...
No.
No, no. This is just a reshaping of land.
A wetland question isn't necessarily, you know...
We're not entirely...
I know you don't want to...
Right, right.
Right, but, but, see, I...
The other question, because the lot line isn't, I mean, because the wetland line is not confirmed, you know, I didn't measure out how many feet the line itself is, but let's, let's say the line is an additional 10 feet up or five feet in different areas. It may cut into your contiguous upland area, in which case the lots might...
They wouldn't be built, would they?
Right.
Right. They've got 200, 2,000, 200 square feet.
So...
It is a long line.
Yeah.
But...
But it could have.
But here, so here's, here's my thought, and let's go around the horn. But my thought is, okay, now, I, you guys, I mean, I've had issues with this in the past, and I've tried to change the bylaw, but we haven't been successful. As I, just as I read, you know, Stephanie's report, right, the question is the board to consider whether the extreme topographical, topographical conditions, in this case, extensive wetlands, that exist preclude access to lots from Bay Road, thus negating the meaning of frontage. Thing is, personally, I don't see anything in our bylaw that says that. And I think you're right. There's, so there's taking you at your word that there's legal precedent on both ways, which I guess, because it's one of those tricky. But that doesn't, by us, if we approve this, it still doesn't make them a buildable lot. Because to your point, the wetlands may have, wetlands, well, they never seem to dissipate. They just keep growing. So, you know, and the only access, there's nothing in our bylaw, you know, we're protected in that even if all of a sudden they were to come off of one of these lots up here, it still has to come to us for a, go ahead. Still has to come to us for a, for a special permit. So...
And just before I go, there's a reason, you know, and I spent quite a bit of time going through it, was to let the board know, not that you had to...
Right.
...determine that the lots weren't buildable, or that the frontage didn't exist, but that it was, if you did, that it would be backed up by case law.
Right, right. And we appreciate that. Have a fun presentation.
Thank you. One other thing, not that it would help us much tonight, but, you know, going forward, a lot of towns in the area that we work, Brockton in particular, East, not Easton, Rainham, they have you put a note underneath your signature block that says the above endorsement is not a guaranteed as to zoning compliance or buildability. Just saying that it just speaks to frontage and area. You know, that's it. So it's, just so it's on that plan, so other people can see it, as opposed to, you know...
Yeah, I think, I think actually, I think, I bet you if we searched the closets, we have a rubber stamp.
That probably says something to that effect.
I think we used to do that back.
Sometimes like there's a, like a series of swaps is sort of necessary before the final product sort of comes in there. And I don't think that has really been a major stumbling block in the past.
Right. And, you know, I, I think, and that's always good to note, because, right, it sounds like they're going to be coming before us quickly, but we know it. There's plenty of times we've done this, and then 16 years go by.
Exactly.
The board changes out, the people change out, and the only...
What you don't want to have happen is for you to sell the lot to me with, you know, me thinking it's a buildable lot.
Oh, yeah.
So at least, if you have something like that on the plan, then at least...
Right. But, you know, I think pretty recently, we've had, and again, I don't think our bylaw, I, I wouldn't feel comfortable, I mean, I, these, these are lots. These are okay to make them a lot. Are they buildable or not? Well, that's to be determined.
For other people to determine.
Um, well, maybe for us to determine. We don't have the information.
You're one of the, right, exactly.
I agree with that.
You know?
I think...
Yeah, yeah. But again, that doesn't really matter. This is, you know, my concern here is if houses end up here, it goes through the process that we, and you have to, it's only, with the process we have set up, public hearing, so we can hear from these people and, right, hear more plans of the house and how, you know, because I, you know, I, you know, I could fully support personally, a couple of houses going here, but I could also be totally against it. It all depends on how it's doing. And that's why we do it as a special permit, so that it's, so everybody's investments can be protected.
Sure.
So that, because, you know, it seems like there's lots of land, and if that wetlands line stays pretty much close to where it is, and of course, right, you have to bring your, your septic design into wherever that, but we can have it so that people...
My kids are allowed, but my cousins aren't.
There you go, yeah. But you know, you know, to me, if we were, if we lived in a, a town or a part of town where you had 4,000 square foot lots, well, you know what? You're going to be right on top of each other. And that's fine. You knew they're going in. But here, we're basically looking at acres, right? You know, it's my old, the old underwear test. You should be able to go in your backyard in your underwear and not embarrass it.
Bring that in.
But, you know, it should be, you know, you should have a little, a little space. The houses shouldn't relate to each other. You know what I'm saying?
In Berkeley, we all could pass the underwear test in Berkeley.
I've actually passed the underwear test in Berkeley. At least, you know, we got a lot of people watch the show on cable, so we try to keep it. We try to keep it lively. So anybody else? Thoughts, comments, motions, whatever you guys want to do?
I support that view that we should, for the purposes of an A&R, at least meet the criteria according to our zoning bylaw.
Yeah.
Right. So I think they should be approved.
Yeah. And so is that a motion?
It is a motion.
Okay.
Some other people want to comment first.
Well, make a second, then we can talk about it.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion?
With the exception that the plans note that it's not a buildable lot and/or subject to all the...
Yeah, I was just saying, if we don't have the stamp right under our signatures, we can write, write in, you know, which is fine.
Scott, are there, there are already three lots there. It's just reconfiguring that...
Exactly. We're not creating any new lots, just reconfiguring the lot lines. Correct.
Are your other two lots buildable, or are they completely wet?
Yeah.
Doug was lucky to get rid of those, wasn't he?
Those are done.
Yeah.
All right. So we have a motion. We have a second. Any further discussion? And I'm assuming there's nobody from here, from the public for this. Didn't mean to neglect you guys out in the hall. All right. Hearing none. All those in favor? Passes your members?
Thank you, folks.
Thank you. Thank you.
Have a good night.
You as well.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, 32 Canoe River Road.
Thank you, everybody.
My voice is off. Thanks. My, my voice is off just from that dog chase.
Yes.
All right. Peter will read us into the record.
Okay. Town of Easton, notice of public hearing. In accordance with the provisions of Chapter 41, Section 81-T MGL, the Eastern Planning and Zoning Board will hold a public hearing on Monday, January 28th, 2019, at 6:30 PM in the Mary Connolly Meeting Room, Eastern Town Office 136 Elm Street, Northeastern Massachusetts, on the application from William F. Welch for a special permit under Eastern Town Code, Chapter 235, zoning, Section 235 to 244, in-law apartments, to allow the creation of an in-law apartment located at 32 Canoe River Road, Assessors Map, 18R Lot 158. A copy of the application and plan may be inspected at the Planning and Economic Development Office, 136 Elm Street, Northeastern Massachusetts, during regular business hours. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on the proposed application and plan should appear at the time and place designated for the public hearing. This notice is also available at masspublicnotices.org. Gregory Strange, Chair.
Thank you. Welcome. So just identify yourselves to the record and present as you wish.
Okay. My name is James Bailey. I'm from People Architects, and I'm here on behalf of Bill Welch, who's the homeowner for the project. I did bring mini sets. That's helpful to follow along.
We always skip over Peter.
Just kidding. So this project, as you said, is for an in-law addition. So first and foremost, the, the location of the addition, that was kind of a process of elimination, just based on the site, because we had the, if you look on the, so A 0.00, so that's the way the site works out. Now, the septic tank is behind the existing garage, and the leaching field is on the other side of the driveway. And then the west end of the lot is all wetlands. So essentially, the only place we could build any addition is in the front of the house. So we, actually, before this whole process started, we did have someone from the Conservation Commission come out, and they verified that if we want to build an addition, the only place to do it is in the front yard. So, I mean, it's not the ideal location, but it's, it was our only option. As far as the size of the addition, it, it does conform to the dimensional regulations on Appendix B in all categories, in terms of, you know, setbacks, lot coverage, building height. The reason we're here is because it is, you know, by classification, an in-law addition. So the, the square footage of the proposal does exceed the 25% requirement of the gross square footage. It is below the 900 maximum that you do allow, you know, based on the existing gross square footage of the house. So what we're proposing is 736 square feet. And I think, like, based on the existing gross, 25% of that is about 460 square feet. So, I mean, we are larger than that, but we're significantly smaller than the 900 max. And the reason, you know, where we came about the size is based essentially on, on program. We, we wanted to have a one-bedroom, one-bath, you know, something comfortable but modest for, you know, an aging family member to, to live in. And just we believe that 460 square feet just wouldn't, wouldn't be large enough for, for her needs. So, you know, we, we designed it to what we think is comfortable, modest, you know. We never intended to have an addition in the front, you know, but we were trying to make it blend with the existing building. So, you know, we're here to present that and ask for your, your relief and any comments you have on the project. I can answer any questions you have.
Okay, thanks. Board members?
So your calculation, you did include the, the area of the basement and the garage?
So I did it two ways. I wasn't, so the, the definition of gross square footage is kind of a little bit unclear. I mean, traditionally, it's, it would be, you know, your livable space above grade. So basement's excluded. Typically, garage is excluded too, but in, in your definition, it doesn't really adjust the garage. But, so for my, for my calculations, I did it both ways. So if you look at the very bottom of page A 0.02, you know, the, the 1853 square feet would be what we assume is gross square footage. And then by that calculation, our addition would be about 39.7% of the existing gross. If you were to include the entire volume, you know, basement and garage, it brings it down to 22.9. But again, that's a different definition of gross.
Right.
So we're somewhere in the middle.
Sure. Yeah, I think, I think it's impossible to eliminate all the ambiguity in bylaws we learn. But, but yeah, I think if you walk on it, if it's heated, that's kind of how we look at it.
Yeah.
You know, so...
So we didn't really want to squeeze a studio apartment.
Sure.
So we just, we figured it was a good, comfortable size.
When we started?
Sure.
I, you know, I didn't have any issue. I read Stephanie's comments on it. So I think that the, the proposed addition is appropriate in scale, and I have no issue with the location at the front of the building, at the front of the residence. So I would, I'm in favor of going along.
Okay. Peter, you guys, anybody down there have any questions or comments?
Looks good to me.
Speak now or forever hold your peace.
What was your thought with...
Works every time.
What was your thought with having both a, a front and rear entrance?
Well, we wanted to enter, a door, you know, by, by the driveway if she does, if, you know, the in-law does choose to come or go. The other door would be like a common to connect to the front porch. Just, we just want to give the option to, to have a porch, like an outdoor space to, you know, to enjoy. And it, it's just another way to connect it to the main house and kind of make it feel, you know, more connected.
Motion to approve the plans. Motion to close public hearing.
Oh, yeah, we have to motion, yeah. First...
Second motion to close the public hearing.
You're okay with this closing the public hearing?
Yes.
Uh, we had a motion, we had a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of closing the public hearing? What that means, Chris is our... What that means, Chris is our new member, so, once you close the public hearing, no more information can come in, so that's why, sometimes, this, this is, yeah, so sometimes we may deliberate or wait, wait a week or two to, but, anyway, so. So now, would anybody care to make a motion on the project?
Motion to approve the in-law apartment, as presented.
I will second that motion.
Any further discussion?
Do we need to somehow note the new square footage, or is that, um, that?
Well, we have the plans.
Including in the motion, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, what happens automatically is when this, or, do we get a second so I can discuss it? All right, so now we can discuss, um, process is when they apply for building permit, um, it reverts back to, there's a whole list of checkpoints to sign off, one of them's planning, so I may go to Stephanie, and she, she'd have a copy of these, and.
Sounds good.
All those in favor? Had a long funeral today, all right, motion passes, thank you, good luck.
Thank you for so much.
We appreciate the work, um, fitting it into the context, it's kind of the reason we have a threshold, because, because you're right, it's tough, I mean, I've, you, I've done a few in-laws that are at the four hundred feet, but it's, you need, right, you need, really, a lot of times you need five, you need five, six, seven, eight, and, but there's good ways to do it and bad ways, so we try.
I think you guys did a good job.
Yeah, did a nice job, so.
Glad you approved.
Thanks.
Thanks, guys.
Good luck. All right, do you wanna extra set for yourselves? Might as well, right? No, he's the other way around, yeah, so, okay, um, I lost my agenda, so I think we are, ah, there we go, let's do meeting minutes. I left actually added one.
That's the only thing I can ever, ever really notice on a house plan.
I noticed, I noticed that one, because I had, I'm like, hey.
I always think, I always wonder why they, people don't want windows on the side of it.
Neighbors that they don't like, maybe, or something.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Is there a second?
I will second that motion.
Any further discussion, all right, all those in favor?
Bob Steen.
Okay, um, meeting minutes, um, okay, so, uh, zoning, create a list for prioritization, so, Stephanie and I were talking, and I get a little concerned sometimes because we're, I understand where we are, volunteers on a board, we don't have a boss, or our boss is the residents of Easton, right? So sometimes all these different planners that we've had, I get it, that they, you know, maybe there's pressure on them to take things off, but I've been talking about how we should maybe circle back and work on some of our rules and regs, like we've been talking about, and, and, and kind of tighten up housekeeping a little, so I don't necessarily, we've done yeoman's work, I think, the last few years, with all the zoning we've done, but I think now that it's been implemented, you know, we sometimes have issues or some things we could tweak, um, but one thing I got thinking about, and we, maybe we'll do some stuff, what I did wanna do is rush through zoning and get something for Springtime meeting, because, you know, we'd have to have it wrapped up in like three weeks, and that doesn't make for good zoning, you know, in my opinion. So, um, maybe if, 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 if there's a priority or something we need to do for the fall, we could always do that, but sort of Stephanie and I had talked about, what I'd like to start in our subsequent meetings coming up is maybe come up with a list of ten, or whatever, you know, zone, zoning that we'd really like to work on, and so, a lot of it we've talked about, and then, and then let's really prioritize it, and say, okay, let's do that, let's target that for this year, let's target these for, you know, for twenty, for twenty-one, that kind of thing. So, I, just, you know, so give that some thought, and let's work, let's, you know, come up with a list, you know, plan going forward at our next meeting.
Great.
Yeah.
I did put together, I, I just drafted a list of potential projects.
Oh, okay, oh, you have it, okay.
Yes, and, um, I laid this up in table format, so the project just being the zoning that we, the board would be considering, then I put, I add a goal, so, you know, again, articulating, what is the intent, what's the long-term goal of making the zoning changes, and then I left actions. Like, but we, that could be filled in over time, and this is my shot at it, and just to kind of prompt the board, and kind of thinking about it.
Yeah, because you're right, because one, two, three, the fourth one, we'll probably do that at Springtime meeting, that's the one thing we'll have to do, that's just a, kind of an omission from last year's bylaw. And, you know, like, because as we were talking, I think we're always, you know, we're focused, and we've been focusing on five corners, for example, remember, we, we, we talked about that last year, and then, but then there's, you know, there's sewers coming, so you wanna push, but then it's like, well, well, how far do you go, because certainly the, really, the big parcel there is, is potentially like Shaw's Plaza, but there's no sign that, you know, anything's happened there, or do, you know, eh, eh, or, or, but, I mean, you could possibly do some things in the parking lot or something, but do we wanna approach that now, or do we wanna? You know, there are a couple of parcels, and then, as we were talking, I think, I said, well, you know, we don't have sewer coming to it, but if you think of the section of town, I'm trying to remember what's cornered it is, maybe the Eastern Native, one, uh, one thirty-eight and one oh six.
We'll call it Michael, we'll call it Michaelson's Farm.
Michaelson's Farm, that was the name of the farm, yeah, but think about that, especially with the highway, right there, and we, we keep talking about walkable neighborhoods and all that, but there's, there's a lot of real estate there, especially on one thirty-eight, that, in that vicinity, which you could, well, it really has huge potential, and there's larger parcels, so even though there's not sewer, there could be potential for, you know, a decent size, some decent sized septic systems, depending on.
Yeah, there is like a river that goes, runs through that field, but I mean, I'm sure there's.
Right, but I'm kind of more, more on the, on the, the northern side of the intersection, right, because you're right, it's all wet up to the, to the golf course, or the, the golf center, whatever it is. And, so that's, so that's, that's that, um, and, so did you wanna talk about?
Yes.
Economic strategic plan?
Right, so I think, um, we, I talked about, like we said, Commercial District Economic Development Strategic Plan that was commissioned by the Economic Development Council, and completed this past fall. I, I believe you all, I linked you, or sent, I think I linked it because it was a pretty large file, to that. I wanted to let you know that there's going to be, um, some public engagement, where the board wants to reach out to the property owners and the business owners and the different boards in town, share the report with them, and go through the action plan and try to build some support and interest in taking on some of the action items, a lot of them, some clearly are related to long-term transportation planning and improvements along the roadway, that's something that's going to take a lot of time and effort and discussions with Mass DOT, and that will probably come through town offices more than anywhere, but there are a lot of suggestions on place making and, um, types of businesses, and what, uh, the different business owners can do to help promote that district and area, so, um, the idea again is to get people in that business community interested and involved, and to bring the boards on board.
So, any, I'm assuming any, your public sessions, you'd like the planning board to be involved, invited to, right, so, okay, because, yeah, although, I mean, because we've spent, you know how I feel about that, we've, we've spent quite a bit of time on this, and I, you know.
Yes. Yes. I, I. The planning board is a huge piece of this.
Is that gonna start soon, these public sessions?
That meeting is going to be, the first meeting is on February seventh, no, 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 March, uh, I'm sorry.
April seventh?
I have to look at the calendar, it's, um, you'll get your invitation to it, you know, one, I think, it's the, it's actually the week that Stonehills on vacation, because it's going to be at Stonehill. I think it's March seventh, I believe is the date.
So you're gonna send something to the board?
And you will get an invitation.
Okay, great.
Yep.
And then, um, I see we have the DIF district on here.
Yes, so, right now, what we're doing is wrapping up the report that inc, that really documents what the DIF district is, the area, what it will include as far as potential projects. Certainly, the sewer installation is the biggest one, but there will be other, um, those long-term infrastructure projects like sidewalks, traffic improvements, those type, type of things. And it really, it really documents what the DIF is about, and we're going to be doing public outreach and information meetings on that too, beginning with the Board of Selectment on the eleventh of February, so you will get invitations to all of those sessions as well.
Remind me what the DIF, 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 uh, district is again?
It's a district infrastructure, um, financing district, and the idea is that you identify a district that if you make infrastructure investments or capital investments in the district, that you would anticipate that there would be additional growth that wouldn't occur otherwise without those investments, and in this case, again, the primary in, uh, investment is in the sewer collection system, um, although, from the visioning session that was held back in September, people definitely felt that they'd like to see that area as a more walkable community, mixed use with residences and, and places where you could go for, um, go to eat, shopping, and certainly some is, um, work opportunities, so, some of the infrastructure program, infrastructure and projects are going to include roadway improvements and sidewalk improvements. What you do is, it, a DIF allows the town to set aside some of the new growth that's appreciated, that's realized as a result of the investment, and use it to pay down those infrastructure improvement costs, so in this case, there's a real, um, intent to help alleviate some of the pressure on the veterans, those sewer veterans through that process, so what happens is, the, you do establish a baseline of the property values and what that revenue is at the baseline before the new growth. That continues to be put back into the general fund, and then the new growth, and in this case, um, there, we're thinking it would be fifty percent of new growth would be set aside to help pay down the sewer cost.
Yeah, so it's like, so like a sewer bond or something like that, I mean, that's sort of like that, the, that's like, sort of, that's the idea for the whole thing, right, yeah.
Yes, you.
You get a bond to.
That's right, you bond it, and then.
It's a subsidy to, it's a subsidy to reduce.
But the bond is tied to a certain income stream, which is, has been set aside within that district, within the growth district, right?
And are you talking about any of the areas that received sewer, like, is it, or is it a specific?
No, just five corners.
It will be a district, it's the, the, DIF district is, um, slightly smaller, but also includes some parcels that aren't included in the sewer district, so there's, um, be, because some of the parcels in the sewer district just wouldn't be part of the new growth, you know, a lot of the residences that are north of Foundry Street, and, um, it does include, we have included some of the town parcels, the open space, because even though, um, these aren't planned infrastructure improvements, but, you know, sidewalks or pathways going through there could potentially be funded through the DIF if it generates enough money, and if, if, if a parcel isn't included in the DIF, you, you won't necessarily be able to use the funds for those.
Great, well, thank you for that, um, and, uh, you missed my riveting chair report, but, uh, and anything, not reasonably anticipated in the chair, nothing came up, so I think, uh, Mr. Benson can bring us on.
We're the new member, you wanna ask the new member to, uh?
Baby steps, baby steps.
Motion adjourned.
Second.
All those in favor? Okay, thank you, thank you, Easton, thank you, ECAT, drive home safely. All right, we have, is this the only?